Yes.
Mary Carpenter's accent, it is determined there is a form.
Okay. Old business, we got the approval of minutes?
I'm motion to approve the old minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, new business, we got approval of bills? I believe everybody's got them in turn on. Nadine, you got any questions?
Yes.
Very good.
This D.D. Hamilton, five thousand dollars. What is that? What?
Is that closed?
Yes, that's closed.
So it's on, what's it on?
That was in closed session.
Oh. Books, a hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents. How many?
The library Dolores turned that in to pay. Probably still within her budget for the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen budget.
Bottle of water, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, we get a pallet of water every now and then for all the guys.
Where do we get that at?
Ramies.
USA Blue Book.
What is it?
Oh, two twenty-eight twelve.
Does it say what the item is?
Just USA.
It's a probe, that's a probe. Is that Mitch?
Probably the, probably the chlorine cap.
Yeah, it came out of sewer, actually, it goes for the sewer.
Yeah, that's a water sewer, chemicals.
And twelve hundred dollars Webster Electric Corporation poles.
Poles.
We got fifty more poles.
Two fifty footers.
Two, oh, two fifty.
Two fifty footers, yeah.
And they're pretty expensive.
Yes, they are.
They are, they're expensive.
And this has worked on TRIM grant from the Missouri Department of Conservation to help pay for tree.
Is that a report?
Yeah, that's, okay. He can talk about that later. I guess that's all I got.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second. Give him a second. Motion carried. Just wait them to organize. Okay, citizens' comments. Has anybody got any? Anybody want to comment on how great a job we're doing? Does anybody want to comment on how great a job we're doing? Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Is there any comments? No? Yeah? Come on up, man.
Our organization that we've got, the Seymour Betterment Community Association, we've got the money to put big signs on both ends, but so far we hadn't found any place to put them. Nobody will let us put them on there so far. But we are working on that, to put bigger signs.
I have the reason, Ron, the ones down at the cemetery is we own the property, so we don't have to ask anybody.
It's really bright and colorful, catches the eye.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't see, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
We are working on that, Ron.
We had even talked at one time about this concrete over here, as you come off of Main Street, like if you're going towards Ramies, there's a big concrete thing there.
Right, no, we talked about it years ago.
And it'd be a good place to put a big sign about Seymour. But I think the railroad owns it, don't they, Sam?
Yeah, they do.
You know, I don't know if we could ever work anything out with them or not, but it would, a big sign would look good there.
We talked about it years ago.
Yeah, we talked about it, you know, if we could check into it.
Any other citizen comments? Okay. Now we have an ordinance has to do with some beehives, I believe. And that is?
Go ahead and read it.
Sure. First reading, please.
This is bill number two thousand eighteen seven forty-eight, ordinance number seven forty-eight, an ordinance to revise and amend Title II, Article One, Chapter two fifteen, Section two fifteen point zero two zero, apiaries and beehives of the municipal code of the city of Seymour, Missouri.
I move we accept the ordinance.
Second.
Got a roll call on that?
Yes.
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Nadine Chris? Dan Weaver?
Yes.
Very good. Now I believe we've got to do a second on it.
Bill number two thousand eighteen seven forty-eight, ordinance number seven forty-eight, an ordinance to revise and amend Title II, Article One, Chapter two fifteen, Section two fifteen point zero two zero, apiaries and beehives of the municipal code of the city of Seymour, Missouri.
Motion?
Are you done? I'll make a motion to approve.
Nadine first.
Second.
Jim, second. Roll call.
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Nadine Chris? Dan Weaver?
Yes.
Very good.
This is in industrial zones, correct?
This is.
Yes.
All we basically did was just go back to what it was before.
Let's see. And we got a bid opening on street paving.
And this is for paving of Thoroughfare?
Yeah, Thoroughfare and George. To start on Thoroughfare, Gold West, at Suthy Street. It'll make the ninety, and then it's George, and go down to the second ninety where it's twenty-four.
Okay.
Now where's George Street at?
Still west on Thoroughfare, past Suzie, went to the nineties, and then back to the north, comes George Street.
Right there on that corner?
Yeah. Thoroughfare just turns into George.
Yeah. So how far down are we paving on that?
To the city limits.
In the festival, Ken Owens.
We're not going on out to the city, into the city limits.
They'll go down east then, east and then it's twenty-four, right there on the corner.
Yep.
Okay.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
We have Germigan, forty-five thousand, forty-six dollars. A-PAC, fifty thousand eight hundred. And then Supersil, a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred.
Big difference.
Big difference. You guys want to see them?
No. Germigan's forty-five.
First, did you make a motion?
Yeah, I move we go with Germigan.
Yeah, do you want me to repeat that? Germigan's forty-five thousand forty-six dollars. A-PAC, fifty thousand eight hundred. Supersil, a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred.
Where's the Supersil front?
I have a question right there.
It doesn't have a, doesn't say anything.
Vernon.
I'll second Jim's motion.
Are you gonna raise the manhole covers up where they're full of, or are they gonna be like that? Guarding the manhole covers on that street.
On Thoroughfare?
Yeah, where they will pave it.
You're not gonna pay all of them?
No, no. Just starting at Suzie Street.
Nineteen hundred feet, Vernon. Okay. Starts at Suzie Street. Heading west. Right past those, and then, yeah.
Now can they do anything to them manholes to raise them?
That's a good question, though.
Them are so rough, huh? Oh, but nothing you can do now, though, right?
We can take them out.
That is so rough, especially one of them.
Up there where you can turn on the thoroughfare?
No, I think it's kind of, just right after the nursing home.
Oh, okay.
It's a real rough one.
I'll put stuff on top of the one right there, but where you turn out to keep, you know, keep that lip from being hooked for now.
I think, isn't that where it's at, Vernon, right there, after the nursing home, it's the rough?
There are three of them, one up there where they, where they put that double light in, they cut the, they just put the blacktop in, and they cut it down to the bridge there, about inch and a half high.
Yeah.
There's the one right by it, and then one on the left.
Yeah, there's three, but one is really rough.
When would they look at starting this? Do we have dates for this, Chuck?
Yeah, Germigan didn't commit to date. I told them all that we need to work done by the end of June. A-PAC, they said they were pretty confident they could get it done, you know, right away.
We don't know about A-PAC's quality, so we do with Germigan, they're the ones we normally use, so.
Germigan did, they said they were really busy right now, but we'll work with it.
A-PAC came to remit to the next.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Any more questions?
Jim, you made a motion, did you not?
Yeah.
I second that.
Yeah.
We need to vote it.
Motion carried.
You want a roll call?
I don't know if we should roll call it, but we should vote, I don't know if Nadine's done.
Yeah.
If we're just, everybody in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to the P and Z board. Charlie Ivey, got some good information?
So.
Tom?
The excitement about what we're seeing in the world, so we're gonna drive a lot of things. Top two that we'd like to have the city look at and address immediately. And this doesn't count the low hanging fruit that's out there that people, people have cooperated, like early over here perhaps, their property of Washington and Charles. But the northwest corner of Anderson and Maine, you all know that, the old skating rink apartments, that needs to have something done to it. And the other one you all know, well, to southeast corner of Maine and Clinton, the old Boadour House, does what's referred to that.
The two-story house?
Two-story house at the corner across the main district.
Bucky knows the home of Alma.
Yeah, Alma, I was trying to think.
The head.
Yeah, I was trying to think that.
Those two represent the properties that have the greatest visibility, the greatest impact, taking care of that. And really, we feel have need for the highest priority to be addressed, and publicly so, to allow people to know that we're going to use that as a lever to perhaps encourage others to do some things with their property. And as the push begins to come for the fall cleanup and the sprinkling that may do a little more, push to have people help other people that are, that aren't able to clean up their properties. But those two right there, the two most prominent that we felt was.
Do you have a list, Charlie?
The list we have is, well, I don't have it with me. Sam has the list.
I'll have a copy.
He has a copy, yeah. And we numbered in one group.
Yeah, I'd like to have a list.
Yeah.
I have it also, Charlie, and one of them's occupied. Second, number two is occupied.
The two is.
The second one you mentioned that actually occupied.
The home of Clinton and Maine? Yeah, 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 I know that is occupied.
It is?
There's people in there.
I didn't know that. I thought it was, I thought she was in the back. Yeah, I knew she didn't.
Okay, so she doesn't actually live in it?
She lives in that little house behind it.
Yeah, she lives in, yeah.
That's what I thought.
I think she lives in the house behind it, not in the house.
Yeah, yeah.
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 She's in there a lot. But I don't think she lives there. Do we, is there utilities hooked up there?
There's no power to them.
No, there's no power.
No, I don't think it may, it's she.
Charlie, on these two properties, of course, the skating rink, there's only one thing that can be done with it. It's a shame to see that Rodecker House go down, is does anybody have any kind of plans for anything that could possibly be done to save it?
Can I please say something?
Sure.
I have been in that house.
Yeah.
Okay, and that was, honestly, it was years ago, and nothing's happened to it since I was in there, about five years ago. It was so, it had with black mold.
Well, yeah.
And, and the windows that had been knocked out for years have allowed all the rain and all the weather to come literally inside the house, that it, there's no option here, it's gotta come down. I mean, there's just no saving it.
Okay. See, the last time, the last time I was in it was thirty-five years ago. You know, so.
It, it, it's.
Rained ago.
Yeah.
And it's my understanding too, that Patty Penny had some construction people that works, she works with on occasion, go through to potentially for her to do something with it, and the recommendation was no. Now that's hearsay, I have no heard damn nothing about.
Is the great big yellow house over here on Francis, is it on the list? Nobody lives there anymore, do they?
Yeah.
They do?
Yeah.
Right there, yeah.
I didn't think anybody lived there.
Yeah.
Okay, well, never mind then.
I know someone tried to buy that house that you're talking about, and no, she wouldn't even talk about it.
And it's, it's not going to be an easy thing, and I.
No.
Are these ranked, Charlie?
You were, you were in health care, and tell them that, because that's important.
I'm very limited, that's what I can say about it.
Yes, you are, that's true, I didn't.
What I can say is, I was in the home, and, and it was a great cause for alarm there, you know, and I just, my parents were in construction remodeling for years, and I just can't see how that's even salvageable. The black mold alone would be enough to warrant it coming down, you know. So, that's my personal opinion, but I'm not an inspector, I mean, maybe, I know we talked about sending in the city inspector, you know, Chuck, and have him go in there and take a look at it, and then we discussed it at our meeting, but, because, you know, maybe they did something between then and now, I don't know, but I haven't, you know, I haven't worked on it.
There's been volunteer efforts repeatedly to go up and put OSB over the, open windows, and things like that, just to cover them and protect them.
Yeah.
Paint them white and put OSB up.
But it's, it's, it's some work on, and Sam, he does handle it, Charlie.
I, I did have a conversation with her this week, and I asked her if there was any way I could buy the home, and she almost screamed in the phone, no. But anyway, I told her, I said, I'm, as a city administrator, I'm going to send a city, an inspector in to look at it. And she agreed to that finally, so that's on the plans to do.
One of the questions we've had was our trespass authority. Didn't we pass an ordinance?
Yeah, you can, if nobody will let you on voluntarily, we can get an administrative search warrant through the municipal court.
So that, and, and we all know it's gonna be a problem, but.
Yeah.
The reality of it is, with some proposals that could become reality, groundbreaking today at the drive-in, dirt was, dirt was moved today, and, and other things, we must address changing the town's perception, because perception is reality. And as we begin to take some of the low hanging fruit out there, and encourage cleanup and push, and, and perhaps what we can look for also is, is a coalition, perhaps in churches. Some of the people that, you know, church members that need some help in cleaning up. But really focus on making the town what it can be, because as we begin to attract and get a business in here, there are gonna be more looking. We have people that come through in the books before, and didn't like what they saw, because they have choices all over, all over Webster County now, with the SEZ having been really supplanted, and its advantage for Seymour by the Webster County, so we don't have that similar advantage anymore when it relates to development in the immediate area. The list is there, and, but the priority to two items are the apartments and Cathy's house around the corner. And it's not gonna be easy, so we are now going to have to look at ordinances, and at codes and everything else, to put some teeth in it, but we, there are plenty of ordinances that we have on the books now that have a little teeth, that has some teeth in them, but we're not enforcing them.
Along those lines, I can tell you that, that in the past two weeks, first of all, we sent out more than fifty letters on lawn mowing, and then after five, between five and ten days lapse, we've had contractors out mowing those. If you go down Summit, you'll notice that hayfield with that trailer has been knocked down. Anderson Street Apartments has been mowed. We're enforcing those ordinances, we're tacking those costs onto the property owners, and that's gonna happen times fifty if these people don't mow, knock their grass down. We're at the point now where Sam has the full authority to start whacking them with a stick, and send our contract mowers in.
And, and I'll speak as an immigrant, the cousins can get by with it. I'll just leave it at that. But literally, that's the kind of thing that hurts the town, is the little informal power seedages within it. And Seymour is on the brink, beginning to break out, the perfect distance, both were not too far, we're not too close to sprinkling. And with, with the activity that we're seeing from the council now, I am, I have, I have just been disencouraged since oh-eight, nine, seven.
I think Sam could, I mean, without saying too awful much, Sammy, you might give everybody here a couple briefing. I mean, I know on this list I see several properties that I know you've already began negotiations with. So we've certainly taken the P and Z's list, and we asked you to come up with a list as, as the Board of Aldermen, you guys did, and now we're acting on it. I think we're in negotiation on, on a couple of these. Number four, I know, is there. There's one on Division not listed that I think we're in the process right now, without saying too much, Sam, correct?
Yeah.
Well, we've talked to Anderson, and you've made an offer, have you not?
Yeah, I have.
Same thing would be true with Charles and Washington.
And Court Street.
And, and same with Court, I think Court Street, you've got a done deal almost, don't you?
No.
No?
No, that's, that's on Division, and I have another.
Division's one, yeah, yeah. Anyway, I guess the point is, is that Sam's on it, and he's, he's wheeling and dealing for us to try to buy as many of these as we can buy. And as stated before, we're gonna tear them down. There's no rehab, and there's not gonna be any delay. As soon as we get them bought, they're coming down. And, and then we're gonna get the lots prepared, so we can sell them, because we don't want to sit around and mow them. We want them on the, and, and there've been a lot of people who have come to us, five or six at least, wanting to buy these lots. So we're, I don't think we're gonna have any trouble selling them. So it's pretty encouraging. It's one of the few programs the city's got into that I've not heard anybody gripe about yet. So, anyway, thanks, Charlie, for you guys, your board, or your P and Z commission doing this list for us, because it gives us a starting point.
We've got a good group, and we're looking to add you to, we have a very good group.
Yeah. That's super.
And we appreciate the commission, the council, and Sam pushing ahead.
Great job. Any more, any questions on the P and Z?
I don't have any.
I've got one, I guess. It pertains to the citywide cleanup, I know it went pretty fair. I had a question, have we ever asked people to take their trash and debris to the side of the street, and we come by with a trash truck and pick it up? I mean, I figured I could ask you, but.
Like for brush clean, you mean trash or brush?
Just to make it easier for the people to get rid of the stuff, is what I'm thinking. Have we done that? Well, I know, but let's, let's take my neighbor across the street, they had the hayfield.
Uh-huh.
She's got stuff in her yard that she's got no way of getting it over there. And I, just as a for instance, and I just kind of wondered, would it be easier for the people to just take it to the side of the street, and we have the trash trucks come and pick it up? And it could be a two or three week process, but still, it's making it easier for them.
I know in the past, when, when, when I personally had brush, well, for example, I cut all that ivy off the back of my building, and piled it all up, and, and I called City Hall, and a week later, somebody came and got it.
And I understand that the brush and the limbs are one thing.
You're talking about trash.
I'm thinking about all the trash that people have around their house, yeah.
Like refrigerators and washers.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, and if it's too expensive to do, I can understand that, but.
I don't think it would be an expense issue, Richard, I think it would be, are they gonna even be motivated enough to pull it to the corner?
I don't know.
I mean, kind of referring, without being nasty, I guess I will be nasty. The joker that we had, Matt Hickey, our contractor, had to brush hog that property on Francis Street three times, three full brush hoggings, just to knock it down. And it looks terrible now, because you've got all that dilapidated brown grass, because they turned it into a hayfield. When we've got homeowners that are that unconcerned about how they survive, and won't even mow their grass, I can't count on them to even put their trash out for the trash truck, if, you know, that, that's the, I, I think that we could offer to do that during the cleanup, say, maybe we, we could, realize that's gonna cost us more over time, and there's gonna be costs associated with doing that.
Really, I was thinking, maybe you get your, was it WCA trash guys to come by and pick it up?
And most of the time.
I mean, I don't know that they will.
But, but who's gonna pay for that?
Well, I'm sure we would have to pay for it, I mean, we've got dumpsters over there we probably would pay for.
If people call up here and need help during the cleanup, we always find somebody that will go help them. Isn't that, isn't that right?
I see what you're, I, I see totally what you're saying, Richard, I think it's.
I just thought it would make it easier for the citizens to get the trash to the side of the street versus.
Most people's got that stuff around their house, they just rent, they're not owning it.
But I mean, I'll give an example, I think it's a good one. I'll use Gertie. Gertie's a hundred, okay, and she lives on the other side of her vacant lot that we're looking to purchase. Gertie, until last year, got out and hand mowed her yard at ninety-nine. She never had trash in her yard, she always kept it picked up. And if someone like that can take care of their yard, which costs nothing, then we got people like, if you go eastward down Summit from your house, to that red, two-story concoction of a home that has junk slang all over it, and non-mowed weeds, and all that kind of, and it's been like that for a decade, and we've sent seventy ladders. He, they are not going to ever clean that up. I mean, even if we offered, I would say, to have Mitchell pull in there and start loading it, they'd be like a hoarder and say, don't touch our stuff. That's, that's the problem. I've been here twenty-five years now in town, and if there's one thing consistent here is that I've seen the city try. And if there's one thing consistent here is that I've seen the city try in numerous cleanup objectives. We have gone so far as to, I mean, do everything under the sun. We were going to give ladders. We, we had the police go. I can remember when, when police, not just Ron Wright, but other chiefs threw tickets at them. And I can remember them coming to Judge Thompson here and, and before him, Judge Sheever. And them saying, that's not a crime to be poor. I'm not going to enforce these tickets. I'll give you a leeway or whatever. Or even they would slap the gavel and say, you're fined five hundred bucks. Well, they wouldn't pay it. And not, nothing worked because some people just don't want to clean their stuff up. For what? I don't know why. They just don't. So this initiative kind of, this is why I wanted us to start with the reclamation, starting with the vacancies. We're going to take out where there's no humans to deal with. No one's living there. No one can squawk and go, oh, you're taking my house away because they're vacant. And that allows us to start the initiative. Then I think phase two is we start going through our books and we enforce the books. And we do just like we've done with the mowing ladders. The girls have followed the books.
Now, like you suggested, get the Seymour, or the Springfield.
Absolutely. What we have, essentially, that's a chapter out of their book, which is send in the contract mowers. And whatever the bill is, it gets tacked on to their, you know, onto their taxes and that'll wake them up. If it don't, then before long, we're going to own the property. It'll take us a couple of years. But you have us mow your place. Like that, that brush house that Matt Hickey mowed, it's got to be mowed in a week. Well, the meter's running. And, and we can do the same thing with trash and junk in the yard, you know? We have orders. You have a washing machine in your front yard.
I was just going to suggest that probably on the next cleanup, let's try that option and see if we can.
To offer the service?
Sure, why not?
I would, I think that's a good idea. But I think if we're going to do it, Richard, I would say that we, we probably need to formulate a system for it. Meaning that you move your stuff to the curb side and you got to call us. Or somehow register. There's got to be at least some degree of initiative on their part. I don't think that's a terrible idea. There's going to be cost, but I don't mind to have that.
But cleaner town is a good cost.
We should make contact with Springfield P and C people. And we have the codes going through looking now to see how we can modify our own ordinances to reflect what, what Seymour needs to do, make sure that, that we have the.
Well, isn't their system a complaint-driven system if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
So all there has to be is a complaint and then boom.
Right.
Well, I love that. That'd be great. Yeah, and it can, it can be any complaint.
It can come from anybody.
Yeah, but they don't react unless there's a complaint. That works great. That's super for us.
Good enough.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's move on to Mitch Palmer's report.
The four will be done tomorrow.
How many polls they get done?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, very good.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Count these two over here.
Accident.
Well, we changed the boats for, for smother pump, adding service over there.
They're flushing that pump now, right? Is that, is it done today or?
Uh, he flushed on it. I didn't get, I'll take a sample.
Snap, okay.
We're listening online.
Okay.
And then I have to cook some, two days, do little things like that.
Any questions for Mitch?
Mitchell, as they go forward with Tote, the project out there, do you have to, you have a role in that? Kind of overseeing any of that or do you have to, does that take a lot of your time?
We have to, we have to turn it around.
Right. Are they going to let you know when you can come in and do your thing?
We're good. I mean.
Yeah.
I talked to one thing, Roger.
Roger.
He's on the camper and, and, and some different things on, on maybe the future stuff, you know, sort of put the, the socialized boxes and, you know, where they won't be in the way. But we've got to know where the big holes are and where, you know, how big the sewer and how big the water is.
Right. It looks like from his dozer work, is he putting a road in on the north side there?
Uh, that parking lot's going to go plum up to where he's got that down.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. That's a big parking lot.
And he's supposed to give us more even for going up the, kind of the highway for, we'll have to walk that way to furnish it for him. And then get some more stuff prepared.
Cool.
Between him, Roger, and Tote, I'm on the phone with them daily. So anyway, and I'm keeping Mitch up to date on, you know, what we need done and so forth.
Yeah.
Mitch went and hooked them up some temporary today.
Well, now we talked to him. He's going to bring.
Oh, okay.
He's going to bring his deal down too, thank you.
Okay.
Well, I like us having a point guy on the ground on us to, for our perspective, that's good.
I do too. And I've, I've been referring him to Mitch as I could, as I could, you know, like on the transformer and other things.
Any more questions for Mitch? Well, it looks like you're off the hook. Okay Chuck, Mr. DRM.
Chuck, you've got pink shirt on now.
He's looking good. Looking good.
It's kind of pink.
It's pink.
He's got a colorblind issues, Chuck. It takes the strong men who wear pink shirts.
Uh, my list is short tonight. I run the road grader too today. I hit every road in town except for yours, I think. That's road scenario. We can't run a grader down anywhere, it's a tractor possibly. But I did hit every other road in town.
You did fill up some holes though. Somebody did, didn't you?
Yeah. Yeah. Then after the holiday weekend, we ran a rock in, driving roads. So should see some improvement there. The big thing I've been working on is the trim grant that you mentioned earlier. I wrote a grant for the, the apartment conservation, trim grant for pruning. We've already approved the pruning on the square, which we've done the first portion of it. But they're coming back October one to start the second portion. Well, if we get approved this trim grant, we can get all three of the parks done, South Park, West Park, and the square done. For it's a sixty forty split on the grant. So with our portion, we'll spend about the same money and get it all done.
Cool. That's awesome. Great.
We'll find out on that mid-September, when they'll, they'll let us know. But if that goes through with it, we'll get all the pruning done in all three parks. Other than that, I've been chasing asphalt guys around, trying to get these bids in for the roads.
I saw you got the, the, the ten horns in for, for Kelly Fireworks. It's awesome.
Yeah, yeah. And Toby installed those, granted him.
Signs.
And, and we put signs up out there. He reported signs for, for, let's really go.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We got some truck crossing signs we put in there. He, he seems to be happy with it, so.
We didn't have the signs that we asked for, but Chuck got on the phone with him and told him what was available. And between the two of them, they come up with two signs to put on each pole that covered what Anthony wanted done.
Great.
We got it done.
Yeah.
Mitch, and I probably should have asked maybe Mitch this, I don't know. Those pipes that, or they, he called them pipes, they're at Kathy Day's house. Someone called me that they took down. Someone wanted to know if, if the city wanted to sell them. Oh, okay, okay.
Chuck, when, when, which it looks like it's going to be journegging, when they come in to pay, if you would, this would be better handled by you versus Sam having to do it. Contact both Kirk Penner at the Seymour Bank and Jerry Clark at Clark Farm and Home. Because they're wanting to buy some asphalt from them too.
I've got a sticky note on my computer.
That's awesome.
As soon as I got the dates, when they're going to show, you'll know about it.
Great.
And what about the ditch at Bonnie and Paulies? She was asking about. You know, you mowed that maybe a time or two. Can you mow, somebody mow that again?
We, we mowed it all last summer.
Yeah. Well, I think you mowed it once or twice this year. Because she, she's not able to mow that ditch. And if she could, she'd appreciate it.
If somebody got that today, we did a lot of work on the tractors, but I don't know if we got it.
Okay. I'll, I'll let him know.
While we're on the topic of mowing, how many yards, Les, you might know this. How many yards have, how many yards of our con, enforcement of the ladders, how many yards have we mowed now?
Three. Hillary notes more.
Hillary, fill me in. What's, what's next? How many, how many haven't followed our letter?
We've sent out thirty-five letters.
Okay.
Nineteen of those people have mowed on their own. And we have sent out three to be contract, mowed by the contractor. And then beginning Tuesday, they will be going, we hit those three that were the worst now. And then after the holiday weekend, we have several that will be.
Great. How many mowed on their own after September?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
So thirty?
Well, that's, that's good.
That's pretty good. Yeah, that's real good.
Yeah.
See, I'm thinking them folks probably drag trash up to the street.
Actually, I thought, Richard.
Well, well, well played, Richard. So essentially, we've got thirteen that are in non-compliance remaining. So there's six, there'll be sixteen that didn't, and we've mowed three of them, so we've got thirteen left.
I suspect after the weekend, there'll be more to send letters to.
How many contract mowers do we have that are doing this for us?
We have.
I mean, on a roster.
Four that have contacted us if they would like to.
Be willing to do it.
To mow some of them, yeah.
And who, who is your most reliable?
Um, so Matt Hickey has done all three of ours so far. He was available to do, to mow right away.
Mm-hmm. He's local, here in town.
Yeah.
What about Jeff Gavin?
Um, he's not insured.
Oh.
He's insured.
Well, I mean, in the sake of timeliness, of course, mowing's one of those things that, I mean, I would say of our contractors, whoever can get to them the quickest, get them on it. Because we're passing this cost on to their tax bills, correct?
Right.
So I, you know, I know that oftentimes in the, in the, in the quest for equality and distribution, you, you dole them out to four different guys, but some of them might not get to them for three or four days. And I think that's a real problem. I think that, I'm, I'm, I'm a quick, quick, quick person and, and so.
Don't win them.
So.
I did try to contact Jeff Gavin to see if, so that maybe, maybe work to him to get the insurance. But I don't have a good phone number for him.
So at any rate, yeah, that's, well, when Tuesday gets here, maybe tomorrow, you can get those folks kind of lined up and, and.
I've already got some.
Perfect. Okay. I'll put you in your job.
I've got a couple more questions for Chuck. How about Mrs. Ruby Smith? Did you ever check on that ditch or whatever she's talking about? That over. Over, where is that at? What street is that?
Can. Can.
Can, yeah.
Toby looked at it. I don't know where.
And how about the cabinet shop? Has anyone ever done anything to that?
I'm going to, I'm going to look still taking it.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay.
Well, I love the fact you guys are now giving us reports from street, water, sewer team. This is quite impressive, Chaka, you the architect. Thanks.
Any more questions for him?
I gotta add something that the reports are coming in now because all the department heads have tablets. And so we're trying to do all of that electronically. Some of the guys are still doing a little hand scratching here and there. But anyway, we've made some real progress in getting our staff to, to use technology.
That's good.
Well, if there's no more questions for Chuck, then I guess you're up, huh?
I don't have any to report. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't have anything to.
Well, then, let's move on to the Alderman's report. Who wants to start? Jim?
Uh, I don't really have anything for open. Maybe a little bit for closing and he talked to Sam about some stuff. But nothing that can go on that. I don't have anything.
I talked to someone at Burlington Northern to see if they might furnish the paint to paint that, because that.
Taboo's? Taboo's?
Taboo's up there. So they're supposed to call back Monday.
It's not, it's not the paint that we need to paint it with, but it has to be sandblasted and that that's on it is lead-based paint.
We can't get lead-based paint and put on that though?
You can do the way we can paint what's on it.
Yeah.
It's kind of like that.
Well, they might have.
Well, we, we can have that done, but it's going to be expensive to paint that, paint it right.
That looks terrible.
It does.
It does. I agree.
It does.
Yeah.
It's very expensive to get it fixed, though.
Well, maybe they can give us some kind of suggestion of what we might need to do, or maybe what they might do.
That, that paint has to.
Yeah, I know it has to be special paint. Yes.
But to take it off of there, it has to be contained is the problem. And so we've looked at several things, never come up with anything we thought we could do. But at budget time, I'm going to put some money in the budget, try to get that approved from you guys to have that taken care of.
What, what, what's a ballpark cost of taking that paint off there, Sam? I mean, are we looking like ten grand?
Yeah, oh, or more.
More.
More, as I recall.
We'll have the guys in the suits and all that. It'd have to be great. I mean, it's a, it's a quite a hundred.
Well, is that a, is that a landmark that's just vitally important to the city? Is that something that?
I can't answer that. I haven't been here that long.
I would say it would cost more to move it than it would to paint it.
Well, that's probably true. It might want to do it.
I'd like to have it. Why don't we, why don't we consider selling? I'm dead serious. I, I think that's good for thought. I, I'm not real comfortable dropping ten grand plus on a, on a railroad car that nobody can go into, that nobody, it's just fenced off. And they, maybe that kind of looks neat, but that's.
Not the way it looks at all.
You know, uh, well, we ought to consider selling it.
Okay.
I guarantee you, put up a bid, there'll be buyers.
Yeah.
Those railroad enthusiasts.
Put it out on Craigslist.
Turn it into a diner.
Okay, you can do that.
I mean.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, I'd just hate, I'd hate to see it go. I would hate to see it go.
You're a sentimentalist.
I am sentimentalist. It looks good out there at the park. That's the only, only part of the railroad we got left. I'd hate to see it go.
It's like an apple.
Huh?
It's like the apple.
Yep.
Or the whistle.
Yep, the whistle. Right, right.
You're kind of being like Patty with the old gazebo.
I think I've just been around Dean Rau too much.
Well, I mean, that's something that as we get into the budget process, we probably need to look at real numbers on what it would cost to fix it. And if it's super cost prohibitive, then, you know.
Okay, now let me do some work on it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And where are we at on land and buildings, building, where are we at on that?
I've got to get him the contract. I've got to put some verbiage in it about doing the wall the way he wants it. I have not done that yet.
He, he wants verbiage in there that, that Toby Griffith do the walls.
Once I get that done and get it to him, it's ready to.
It's not for that, it'd be gloves, I think.
And I guess we can put that in there without taking bids on that, can't we?
Yeah, I mean, we would, you know.
I mean, we can just put that in there as, as part, as part of.
As part of the deal.
As part of the deal and we won't have to take bids on it then.
That's what it's doing, like, it's like, it's like part of the purchase price, right?
Right.
Have you heard anything about the audit? Wouldn't they not come back on that?
We can ask our resident expert, Mike. Have you heard anything?
We can ask. Last time I called them, they said it's written. We should know the next couple of weeks. But someone was doing something around, I think those are something in the home, kind of stopped working on the project. They don't really talk to me much, very limited. They said it's written and this is for the crew. It'll be a closed session meeting.
Is it accurate, Les, that the bill's over fifty now?
Yes. And, and sign that we acknowledged it. And now the fifty thousand.
That's it?
That's it.
That's where we are.
I don't have anything that I can think of. Nope.
No?
I don't have anything. Oh, I do.
There we go.
Resident compliance, actually, I do. I've had residents contact me in the Chesterdale Estates area, noting that the, essentially, there is a, a full-fledged mosquito invasion going on back there. As folks are gardening and doing, mowing their lawns and whatnot. But water retention that's occurring back there is, I guess, creating quite the breeding ground for mosquitoes. And I don't know. Mitchell, can you think of anything we can do back there to get rid of that, that stale water that's just lingering there all the time?
A lot of it's that grass, you know, that, my figure?
Yeah. Hey, you live back there, Alicia.
That's where I live, yeah. And that's not what, they're mowing, and they're cutting the grass. And I mean, that's happening, which it was a time where that wasn't happening. What's causing it is that culvert back there has gotten so much weeds grown in it that some of them are taller than I am. And it's where the city put that long ditch back there. I don't guess it's concreted or anything, but so all of the weeds have grown up, and so the water's not moving the way it's supposed to. And it's just, it's a huge swarm of mosquitoes back there. So like, I can't go garden behind my house. I can't let the baby play in her little kiddie pool behind the house, because you are literally attacked, you know, by the mosquitoes. And if you go stand out there, you can see them swarming. I mean, it's just, it's horrible.
We, we checked into spraying one year and didn't get anywhere with that because so many people in town, the largest majority of the people, have upper respiratory issues.
Right.
And so, and none of that stuff's good. I mean, if you're gonna kill mosquitoes, it's not good to breathe.
Well, can't the city cut the grass through that ditch?
I was gonna say, can't they go in there and cut the weeds and brush them?
I mean, we can look at it. What do you think, Mitch?
Cut it, I mean, there's shot rock in there. You're not gonna get it mowed slick. I mean, there's still gonna be grass to walk up, but yeah, they can mow it, I mean.
Okay.
Can we kill the grass?
Yeah, so that's.
Mow as best you can, try to kill what's left.
That's what I was wondering, can we diesel spray it or whatever?
Well, we've got stuff to kill it with. It's just expensive, but we certainly can't do that. Yeah, fifty-five gallon.
How long was that last? How long, how far?
Do you delete that?
How far will that go then? How far will that go?
How much did you say, fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
No, it did go a lot of ways, I mean. And it killed the grass good, you know. Like it ground up and stuff anymore, it's just more.
No, it won't do nothing anymore.
It just kills what you see. What we have kills the root. So it, it sterilizes the ground, if you will. It helps the roots.
Here's the bad thing. All of that is the city, okay? And so you've got grass this tall, it's kind of hard to tell the person, oh, mow your grass, when the city's got this long stretch going there that is so tall. They're up there on that.
Okay.
Well, that's right.
I mean, it's true.
We'll get it out, get it out.
Well, it's a part of that drainage issue that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because what, what happens is when, when we get any kind of a large rain, correct, Chuck? We're gonna have huge retention because we've got blocks all along the way, I mean, that's the flow of water.
When the city first put that in, it was amazing. That water flowed great. And so it's been several years, and all that, that brush had built up, and now it just doesn't flow right. And everything gets stuck, and anything that falls into it, you know, is, is just stays there, and it's just nasty.
So we're gonna try to mow it and then kill what's left?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we, what we need to do. I, I haven't been out there to look, so we'll just have to look at it and take, and put a plan together and let you know what we're gonna do.
We'll get after it. We don't want to send ourselves a letter.
Go ahead and send them one.
The original plan was to start at the Sterling make property worker with that.
Right.
And put some time in.
Right.
Yeah, Anthony bought it. He bought all that.
Sent out.
He bought all that. He didn't let the city spend any money. He signed on it last Friday. He didn't come back, but I think. He started.
I, I got the message.
He started, yeah.
I'll get on with it.
Yeah, Anthony bought all that.
Okay, time out here. Let's go back to Todd, Chuck. You, you were starting north and working south. That was our game plan. We talked about that a month ago.
Yes.
So in the interim, where you were gonna work, we had a deal, we thought, to buy that.
Sterling around for several weeks and.
So now Anthony Kelly's bought it.
And, and had worked it, had a verbal agreement with Sterling.
He bought it all.
Okay, will Anthony let us work in there?
Uh, it's what I'm working on now.
Or does he want to sell it to us?
Will he sell us that part or what?
Probably something that needs to be mentioned in closing, I'd say.
Okay. Got you?
I'll take care of that.
Is that it? Dan?
That's all I got.
That's all you got. Well, now we are back to Alder Woman, Nadine Gribb.
This is on the no parking signs. I've had the three people in that own business over there. It was Marilyn that owned the, that did own the beauty shop there. And she said she thought that probably really hurt their business, but how was she gonna sell it with all those no parking signs? And then Wayne, Wayne has got his building right in it, and I guess they parked up at Dan's. But I think the no parking, I could put, I counted five no parking signs in front of my building. But boy, how cheap does that make the town look? I mean, you can't invite anybody into town because there's no place to park.
And literally, them saying no parking.
Yeah.
Is inappropriate.
Right. Exactly right.
They could say.
What did the sign say exactly? Saying you need to stop walking down the. I think it says reserved.
No, it says no parking. Uh, what's the name of the place?
Old Hickory.
Old Hickory, no parking. No customer parking only. But if we all done that, I think it makes the town look so unfriendly.
I thought this was settled two weeks ago.
Well, it's not.
The fact, the fact is, that's Texas, polls, Texas.
No, you.
Yeah, those polls are his. That's what we went through two weeks ago.
That's the sidewalks.
The awning is his, and the signs are his, and the street is the city's. He can do what he wants to with his stuff, but don't call us because we can't enforce it.
That sidewalk poured in front of my building cost me thirteen thousand dollars.
It cost, it cost me a bunch too, and I poured the sign too.
The city most certainly doesn't own my sidewalk.
Well, they say they own them now. They're saying they own the sidewalks.
I think you probably want the city to own the sidewalks. So if somebody falls, it's on the city and.
Yeah.
I think you're, you, it's unfortunate that you got sent a bill, but you, you want the city to be the owner of the sidewalk.
Well, that was in a.
So, and if we're gonna leave the no parking signs up, I say let's get a dozer and dose all the trees out of the park and make a parking lot.
I'm not for that.
Well, why not? Why not? I mean, shall.
Thousands of dollars hurting our trees.
Maybe we could put the caboose up there then.
Why me so?
And we talked about this last two weeks, and I, I don't really care. The whole thing is if it's, if it's on private property.
Everywhere west of us, you know, Carthage, all them, what they do is they have two different roads. They have a row of parking places right in the middle where you drive. Where you think to drive around the square. You know, you've got buildings here, center square here, and they have a row of slanted parking places down the middle of the street.
That's common in a lot of squares.
Yeah.
And I, but I guess I would say, I mean, and I'm not here all the time, but like when we drove into night, I drove to the meeting, I, I counted nine cars total all around the square. And I've been down here during, during the day to meet with Sam and stuff, and there's like four cars. So I guess, I mean, I guess there's maybe some time where there's parking issues, but I've never been here where you, there isn't a business on the square you could park probably within twenty-five feet of the front door.
I think most people just don't want to park across.
Right. Exactly right.
They're just, they wanna park directly.
Well, yeah.
Where they're going in at, and that's just.
As we discussed at the last meeting, this, and, and Tex was made clear this when he was here, we're not gonna enforce those signs. I mean, if I wanna go park in front of Texas business and dance on the hood of my car for two hours, he can't do a thing about it.
Yeah.
He can't tell me to leave, and I can't do.
And I mean, and like in Springfield, I pull up at my dry cleaners, and there's signs that say, dry cleaning, parking only. But if I, if I wanna park there and walk eight stores down and eat a cheeseburger, there's nothing they can do to.
But one sign, I can understand. I can understand one sign, but when you've got four? And I'm telling you, these old people won't park there that says no parking.
I, you guys can say you don't want them to do, I don't, what, how are we gonna?
I think it makes the town so unfriendly.
I mean, literally, a business could hang a sign in there, like I was joking before the meeting, some restaurant could hang a sign that says, inside their businesses, on Tuesdays, I'm only serving people wearing striped shirts. And somebody can come to a council meeting and complain, say, oh, we have solid shirts, and it's like.
It's not our issue.
It's not our issue. I mean, it's.
You know, I.
Whether they put a sign that says no parking, or pay, please only park here if you're a patron of my business. I mean, if it's there on private property, we can't enforce it either. We can't enforce open parking. Or, I mean, it is, it's private property. But I mean, you guys can put out there an edict that it's, that you can't put the signs up.
What if we also did that?
I guess I'm saying if they put a sign up, what are we gonna do to make them take it down?
We gotta enforce it. We gotta write a new ordinance.
That says we control what signs you can put on your private property.
I wouldn't vote for that.
No.
Well, is it considered an encroachment since the ordinance owns city property?
I mean, we could write an ordinance and say, nobody can add an ordinance that overhangs city property, I guess.
If that's the case, then get ready, write me a check for my oning.
Yeah.
And write me a check for my sidewalk, too.
I just thought it was settled last week.
I thought it was, too.
Well, yeah, because you thought it was okay.
I don't think that, I just don't think it's an issue that we need to be delving into.
So, so we're all gonna put up no parking signs in front of our roads?
I think you should pound in five poles like I'm talking about. Put no parking, see, we're not a park.
That really makes the town look friendly, wouldn't it?
Well, I've chosen not to do it in front of my business. I could do that, but I don't want to. But if Tex wants to, I guess it's his prerogative.
I thought it was, I thought it was the city's sidewalk.
I do not.
I mean.
But it's not on the city's sidewalk. It's on polls.
It's on polls.
That he paid to put in.
He did, or the city.
City didn't put those polls in front of his business.
Who put the polls there, Sam?
I don't know.
The city has never paid for an awning in my life here.
Well, no, they've not paid for awning.
Again, I'm all for it.
And they didn't pay for my sidewalk. I'm just thinking it makes the town look so unfriendly.
Well, I think who gets impacted by that would be.
And what about the senior citizens? And, and I can understand Marilyn, can she sell her business with all them no parking signs?
Well, what about the senior citizens that wanna park there and go in for lunch, but they can't?
Because.
But, but they can't because there's no no parking signs there. People are already parked there. They can't do that. What about those senior citizens?
What now? Well, they've got it all up through there.
What about the senior citizens that don't get to park there and go in? Because people are already there, and they want to park there and want someplace else.
Well, they can go up there in Texas, and more Texas got the no parking. And they won't do it, I guarantee they won't.
All day long, you drive to Springfield with somebody else, they're parked right there on the square all day. What do you do about that? You don't do nothing with them?
What was that now, Joe? What was you saying now?
There are people that park over the square and drive with somebody else to Springfield or someplace to work, because they're all day long right there on the square.
Correct.
What are you gonna do?
Nothing, nothing you can do.
Oh, I didn't know.
It's public.
I didn't know, but, you know, they usually park across the street when they drive.
It wouldn't matter, really, they're just parked on the square.
Would you want someone parked in front of your business all day?
The, the, the bottom line is, somebody's not gonna be able to park where they want to.
Right, and most kind of do.
And I'm not trying to make light, light of anything, and I, I, definitely, this is serious to some folks.
Well, right, it's serious to some folks.
I, I, I think it's just been carried on, but it's getting a little silly.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah, I do.
Because of all the business on the square.
I do.
Yeah.
I do, and I don't gripe about it. I've got Dave Brooks parks in front of my place in that red Cherokee every day, right in front of my front door most of the time. Oh, well, I mean, I've never said a word to him because it's not worth it. I, because if someone wants to come to my business, they'll find a slot to park, even if they go around the corner. I mean, I, I.
Ramy's has got a big parking lot, but I don't always get to park at the door.
Yeah.
Right, and you don't expect.
I just think if we start refereeing parking in town, when does it end? I mean, then what else are we gonna referee? You know, are we gonna?
Whatever you think we need to referee, I guess. I guess that'd be exactly why we need to referee. Yeah.
It seems to me we've already refereed on.
Have you ever had a problem like that, Paul?
On handicap parking.
I have a problem, like what?
Have you ever had problems like this before? People putting up parking signs in front of your business?
Yeah, I mean, it, when I was full-time in Branson, people would complain because they'd drive around old downtown Branson for like over an hour looking for, waiting for somebody to back out and park, and.
So did they put up no parking signs every place?
There was no parking or just parking for X business or whatever. It wasn't enforceable, but at the end of the day, it was like, what do you want? I'm sorry, it's busy down there. I mean, I guess, I mean, it's kind of, if you, if it's a popular place, you might have to drive around and look for a place to park. But I guess, I don't, again, I'm not trying to trivialize it, but I don't think there's a parking issue on the square.
There's not.
So I mean, it'd be one thing if people were putting up no parking signs, and you're having people have to circle the square for twenty minutes waiting for somebody to back out of a spot so they could park. But I mean, I don't, I've never been here where there's, people are like, well, I guess I can't go to the square and see more because there's no parking space.
So why would you need parking signs?
I don't think you do. I mean, put them up or not, we can't enforce it either way.
We didn't tell Tex to put them up. We just told him, we, no, we didn't. We told him we weren't gonna stop him from doing it.
Right.
I, I mean, I could put a sign in front of my business that, you know, says something bizarre, you know, only magicians can park here. No, nobody's going to follow that. No, nobody's going to follow that.
I just think it's very unfriendly, and if we all done it, I think it'd really look unfriendly.
But I just don't think that's something we need to referee, Nadine. That's the only thing I'm saying. And our attorney says there's...
I, I, I'm fine with you. You can put that out there, I just don't know how we'd enforce it. If somebody puts up a sign, we say you can't put up signs, and it's they're putting a sign on private property that says, "Please don't park in front of my business unless you're patronizing it or something," I, I guess I don't...
So it's you own two little, two little poles, you can do whatever you want to do, huh?
You can take them off the poles and put them in the windows.
Yeah.
You know, I can understand if they put a sign up there on Friday night, they're hardly ever open on nights, maybe Friday night.
But it seems to me that the square is a public square. They can park wherever they want to, and that's what they're gonna do, regardless of a sign.
Correct.
Now, some people don't like the signs, apparently you. So, I'm thinking you're just gonna have to get over it, Nadine. What, what, what would happen if someone says, "I do not like that stuff you're painting in your windows at Christmas time"? What are you gonna do?
That's my windows.
Well, there you go.
It's not on the city, it's not on the city's property.
I suppose the city...
I, I just think it's, it's an issue that...
The city could put up companion signs on every corner that says, "The square is open parking," and then have people, I mean, if, if you're worried, I mean, the city could post their own signs, saying...
Well, I just think it looks unfriendly.
That's right, the signs don't mean anything. Yep.
Thousands of dollars going through that square every day, and arguing about this parking.
Well, we want, we want the town to dress up and everything, and then now we're putting up no parking signs.
I, I don't think anybody's really gonna pay much issue to the signs over there. They're just, it's not an issue with people.
Well, it was with Marilyn, who owned the beauty shop. It was an issue with her, and she said she thought that's what really took away a lot of her business.
Issue dropped. Now, let's move on. Do we have any more questions on this? I hope not. I think it's time for executive session, so if everybody would like to adjourn from this meeting, let's make a motion.
Have somebody make a motion to do that, to go into executive session.
Move we go into, move we close this and go into executive session.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Real call?
Jim Ashley?
Yes.
Nadine Curtis?
Yes.
Dan Weiner?
Yes.
Very good. Meeting adjourned.